Go ahead and call the July 15, 2020 Board Meeting to order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking as well as stating your name prior to making a comment or a motion or a second for an action item. And I thank you for that. I'll ask that each Commissioner please respond with a "here" when I call out his name. Commissioner James Doan.
Here.
Commissioner Duggan.
Present or here.
I said here. Commissioner Sanders.
Here and present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Schmidt, not here right yet. And Commissioner Bagnall, myself, I am here. So let's see. Next, we will have the reports by the CEO and management staff. So take it away, Mr. Hickman, if you would, please.
Thank you, President Bagnall. Good evening, Commissioners. Let me pull up my... Oh, I'm gonna have Tim click through those for me. Go ahead, go to the next one, Tim. So we got some cryptosporidium results. We got one O cyst was detected in the Portland Water Bureau sample collected on July 5. Prior to this detection, cryptosporidium was last detected in the Bull Run watershed at the intake on April 28, 2020. The state has determined that the public does not need to take additional protections at this time. Increased sampling will occur four times per week until there are three weeks without any detections. Additional details may be found at wwwportlandorgan.gov/water/cryptoresults. COVID-19 response, we continue with this as everyone is and does. And we have been closely monitoring all the public health data and trends. I think most of you are aware, unfortunately, it appears that the county will not be moving to Phase 2 for some time. What this means at TBWD is the continuing prevention practices that have worked to date. This includes single worker units, working from home, virtual board meetings, maintaining lobby closure, and adhering to recommended precautions when in the office. Social distancing, wearing face coverings in the common areas and in areas where social distancing can be difficult to maintain. These actions assist in protecting health so that the district can fulfill its role as a water provider. To date, we have not had any staff that we're aware of that have been infected by this. We do have one staff member that had a family member that was found positive, but our staff member was not. But that staff member is staying home and in isolation until that event passes. Next slide. The district has been reviewing the COVID-19 Emergency Operations Center experience to identify strengths that can be sustained after the pandemic and areas of improvement that can lead to better resiliency. Establishing the EOC helped the district effectively coordinate, organize, and respond to this event. I would like to acknowledge and thank Mike Jacobs for his leadership as Incident Commander during the past few months. The Water Operations Division Manager, Pete Boone, is now in this very important role. And you, once we complete, we did a kind of a post, even though we're not through it, incident analysis on how we've done with the EOC, and we've learned a great deal, and we'll be sharing with that with the Board in the future as far as what we've learned and what we can do better.
So I have a question, Tom, about that. Is there some particular reason Mike Jacobs isn't doing it anymore? Is this in the interest of training and advancement for Pete Boone? Or is there something wrong with Mike?
Nothing wrong with Mike. No, Mike, but it does, it gets taxing in the EOC role. And it looks like Dick is joining us now. So it just gets taxing, and so that was one thing is just the burnout rate of being in that role. And then the other part of it was, as you suggested, we also wanted to utilize this opportunity to train somebody else to this. And so we thought it was a good idea to hand it off and let somebody else get some experience in that role. So it's been, it's been good.
Madam Chairperson, I need to go deal with a diabetes issue.
Oh.
Back in about five minutes.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Schmidt, have you just checked in?
I did.
Thank you, glad you're here.
Finally.
Hey, better late than never.
This is not very straightforward at all to get into.
You're not having an easy time, are you?
No.
Okay, well, Tom, I think you can go ahead and continue since Jim said, don't wait for him.
Okay, I will continue on. And Commissioner Schmidt, I am working with staff to get you some assistance to make that a little more straightforward for you to get in. So I've been working with IT folks to see if we can get you some help with that.
Well, thank you. And you know, it's frustrating because the box comes up with, you know, enter in and as Dick at tbwd.org, and I hit that, and all I get is a blank box. And that's all the farther it goes. What?
So yeah, we, just so you know, I think we have one of our IT staff that's gonna be getting onto your screen and so he can see what's going on and then guide on how we do better on that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, next slide. Oh, you're already there, thank you. The Water Quality Virtual Summit. So we're doing a newly redesigned annual water quality report that's been complete, and we are doing a Water Quality Virtual Summit that's gonna be held tomorrow, July 16, from noon to 1:00, using Microsoft Teams. This event will feature a presentation from Joel Carey, our Water Resources Division Manager, as well as question and answer session. This is part of the Good Faith effort required to share information about drinking water quality with customers and consumers. Those who wish to participate are asked to please register through TBWD's website prior to 11:50 a.m. tomorrow. I will let you know, as of, I think, yesterday or the day, it might have been the day before, we had, I think, about 80-some people signed up to attend this. So we're also looking to use these kind of virtual summits for different topics as well so we can better engage with our customers. So this is, this is the first one that we're doing this way. So something good coming out of the COVID event is learning how to do these kind of virtual things that makes it easier for our customers to participate. All right, I'm gonna be taking some vacation at the end of the month here. Chief Engineer Kerry Pack is gonna be serving as acting incapacity for Chief Executive Officer the majority of the July, through July 27 through the 30th. So we are in good hands. Go to the next slide. And at this point, I'm gonna turn this over to Paul Matthews for the Safety Minute and Department Report.
So I am glad to see that Commissioner Doan has rejoined us for the Safety Minute. I want you to be safe.
You bet.
See if I can get this to come up the way that I want. So this is Paul Matthews presenting the Safety Moment, and I'm gonna talk about preventing wildfires. A little bit late, would like to do this for the 4th of July, so we would know before we had our fireworks. But if you're better late than other, and with the warm weather coming on, I thought this might be an appropriate topic. Just a couple of facts. First of all, there are approximately 100,000 wildfires in the United States annually. Wildfires burn between 6,000, 8,000 square miles of land each year in the United States. And in 2019, let me click, in 2019, 87% of the wildfires were caused by humans. And so as we probably remember as kids, the Smoky Bear told us that only you can prevent forest fires. And with that, I'm gonna give you seven tips to help prevent forest fires. And because I don't have anything really graphic to show, I've got this gratuitous video playing in the background just so that I can be as cool as Director Crask is when he gets to show his cool things. First of all, report unattended fires. If you do see an unattended fire, I'll report that to 911 as soon as possible to your local fire department. Extinguish campfires when you are done. Never throw lit cigarettes out of a moving vehicle, and I would urge you never throw anything, whether it's a lit cigarette or not, out of the moving vehicle, but certainly not a lit cigarette, especially this time of year. Be careful when using flammable liquids. Follow all local rules on outdoor fires. Use only legal fireworks for your area and where there are no woods nearby. And pay attention to local fire conditions. That's actually very important. It's easy to know when we're at a high fire level, and so pay particular attention. I am always afraid that Washington Park or Forest Park could catch on fire, and I live close to that, and actually does President Bagnall, and wouldn't want the air quality coming in on us. So I ask everybody to be particularly careful in our neck of the woods. That completes the Safety Moment. Shall I just move right into the Department Report? Are there any comments or questions?
Well, I have a comment, which is that as much as I love the Smoky Bear posters, I saw one today that I thought was just so cute. It has a silhouette of Sasquatch, and it says, "Squatch it! Don't light wildfires." So it was pretty cute. You may go ahead with the Safety Report unless there are other questions or comments, I mean, with the Finance Department Report.
Okay, see, then I'll go ahead. And I thought tonight, we talked a little bit about what's going on in the Finance Department, especially as it relates to working in a COVID-19 environment. We have a lot going on in the Finance Department right now, and this pandemic really wasn't on our work plan. We had to adjust to make it work, and I must say that I couldn't be more proud of our team. It would be easy enough to say, I can't do this, I can't do that, I don't have the exact tool, I don't have everything at home, I need to do it. But we essentially sent everybody home on March 16, and we've been able to work ourselves and with their creativity, effort, and dedication, have been able to keep the district's finances and business during the COVID environment. What I've presented here is just a list of some of the activities. I'm not gonna read this to you, but some of the activities that we have in the Finance Department. And we've, we're in the process of reorganizing the department action. We're trying to reorganize more along the lines of our functional requirements that we have as we move forward. So the district's financial needs have changed, and I'll talk a bit more about that. But if you were to compare this to a finance group in a corporation, you would see some of these same things. Financial reporting, financial operations, which is, you know, everything from accounts payable to payroll, vendor management, financial planning and analysis, which, you know, corporations have that as well. Debt management, you wouldn't see in here investor relations because we don't have to worry about Sarbanes-Oxley, and we don't have shareholders, we don't have to deal with the SEC directly in those regards. Investments, procurement, and then we have the other duties as assigned. So you might ask in here, where's the budget? Well, we are looking at how we're gonna get the budget worked with the resources that we have right now. So that is big on my worry list. We also have regional agreements that we participate in, work with our partners regionally. Those things need to be handled. So in any event, we've got a full plate. And this is what is required, really, to keep the district in business. We need to do the financial reporting, which is the audit, the CAFR, all those things, maintaining our internal controls, and that's largely led by our controller. We have the financial operations, as I mentioned before, all those things need to happen on a day-to-day basis. That's headed by our Financial Operations Manager. Financial planning analysis, that's our senior management analyst, and myself, we share those duties, as well as debt management, investments, procurement. Our Financial Operations Manager oversees that, and we have a procurement team, and then we spread these other duties amongst ourselves just to make sure the work gets done. So that's largely...
I have one question, Paul.
You got it.
Is Justin Carlton the Financial Operations Manager?
He is.
Good. Good. It's in good hands, then.
Yes. Yes, he is our, been there for just a little bit over six months. So what are our contemporary challenges that we have? Well, first of all, our business is becoming increasingly complex, and that's why we reorganized to address some of the complexity. Some of it is just driven by the regulatory complexity. The Government Accounting Standards Board seems to come up with new requirements periodically, whether it has to do with leases or it has to do with pension accounting or our requirements to document whether or not we're fiduciary. There's just one pronouncement after another. In addition to just the regulatory side that's driving is actually our joint ventures. So with the Willant Water Supply Program, we've got two new joint ventures, the Willant Water Supply System and the Willamette Intake Facilities Commission. Those things, as well as working with our partners and accounting for $1.3 billion program, has increased the workload quite a bit. Debt management, the district has been debt-free for quite some time. We're obviously working on WIFIA right now, and we have all the required complexity with that, including single audit and some other things that will come along with those. We've also had an increased number of transaction growth in the district, as well as the complexity that we've gone on, and of course, the Willant Water Supply Program and those joint ventures. I've got some slides here in a bit that'll highlight some of the number of transactions that we're dealing with, but just the number of transactions have increased. The other thing that I think I've talked about before are the retirements we've had. So in the past, I'd say, two and a half, three years, we've had six retirements, and I think, well, past two years, we've had six key retirements. In the past four years, we've had seven key retirements. Three accountants, an accounting technician, our technical services accountant, our budget officer slash financial debt project manager, I think is his title, and our county supervisor. So these are senior positions as well that retired. Along with that retirement, we lose some of that TBWD-specific experience that they have, as well as assimilating new staff members. They have to get their team orientation, get to know each other, and to build those communication networks and to get with the rest of the district. So those are challenges, and as I said earlier, even in the COVID-19, couldn't be happier with the progress they've made. And then we have our new pandemic to deal with, and that really threw us a curve ball, working remotely. So, you know, we like to have all of our things right there so we can have our management controls in place, make sure we have our segregation duties, and now we're doing that with our staff working from home. And we've had to implement a lot of technical solutions, had help from IT, obviously, in doing that, to make this work, as well as to do things in a decentralized way. And when you move in a decentralized way, that increases the concerns with controls and segregations. So all those things have been curveballs that we've been dealing with as well. One of the other challenges that we, not alone in finance, certainly this applies to a lot of functions within the district, but we actually serve both as a service provider, where we provide a service to our other departments, as well as other divisions within the district, and to our partners as well. But we're also policy enforcers. We have to implement the Board's policy, and frankly, we need to monitor that those policies are complied with. So we've got, and we have to manage our external audit. So we really have two roles. And so on the one hand, we want to reach out and be that service provider and have the high customer service, and make sure that our internal customers are well cared for, but we need to balance that with the requirement that we still have to make sure we have our internal controls in place protecting the district's resources. So it's a balance that we have. I thought I'd give you a few fun facts. I call them fun facts because I'm hoping that people will enjoy them. So first of all, just a summary of activities that we've had during COVID-19. So I took the number of transactions that we've had since March 16, and we've had some big things that have occurred there. Obviously, we got to the end of fiscal year 2020, and we were able then to process, a lot of things having to do with the Water Supply Program, and that's why you see these large, large numbers for account payables. But in any event, we have had 1,373 account payable invoices, so account payables when we're paying other people, for a total of $34.5 million processed during that period of time. Our miscellaneous billing is when we bill other people, and actually, TBWD bills itself on behalf of the Willant Water Supply Program. We bill ourselves, as well as our partners, $36 million, 157 invoices that we put out. We've issued 126 purchase orders. We've issued 5,000 pieces of inventory for a total value of $154,000 just in the past few months. So some additional fun facts on the miscellaneous billing, this just lays out what the invoices are. We do invoice COBRA, and this is healthcare for people who have retired from the district, as well as people who have separated and under federal and state law, they have access to healthcare through the district. We bill for that. But the big one that you wanted, that you may be interested in is the 33 invoices that we've issued for the Willant Water Supply Program for total $35 million. And more fun facts on the inventory, this is a bit of a typo here. First of all, the number of items issued, there were 5,000, whereas this total value, that was 154,000. What that should say is the minimum value. So we've had things that ranged from $1.93 was the minimum value, the maximum was $2,622. I'm making these fun facts, so I'm gonna talk about the average value. If I were truly making a fun fact, I guess they call it a mean value, but anyways, that was $134, and the median value was $156. I'm not sure why I didn't give you the mode, but I failed to do that. That concludes the Department Report. No big yellow medal to report on, but would answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from any Board members?
I'm sorry.
This is Dick. I thought the median was $54.
The median? Oh, is that right? Did I misspeak? Median $56.31.
$56.31, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Tom, this is Jim Doan. I've got a question. We've had employees retire, and I think it was always the intent of the Board to look at additional salary increases in the fall. Is there a way to go back and fix that if we decide to give salary increases in the fall?
Yeah, so actually, I'll be talking about that in the second agenda item a little bit, but not directly. So let's answer it, maybe Tom would wanna add more to it, but when we went through the process that we went through, we made sure that we had the capability, should the Board choose to do that, that we could follow through on that policy. So we haven't shut any doors to make that, we've tracked all the numbers, so we'd be able to do that this fall. Mr. Hickman, is there anything else to add to that?
No, let's wait till we get to your presentation later on, and I think we can have a little bit of a discussion around that, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Our CEO, Hickman, is there anything that you would like to add to any of that?
No, thank you.
Okey-dokey. Then we will move on to Commissioner Communications and Reports of Meetings Attended. And taking this in sort of alphabetical order, I will start with Commissioner Doan, if you're prepared.
I'm always prepared. But yes, I attended the Aloha Business Association meeting last Thursday. Friday, I attended the Joint Water Commission and Barney Joint Operating Commission meeting, and then tonight's meeting.
Thank you very much. Moving to Commissioner Duggan, and your meetings attended.
It was a pretty quiet month. On July 2, we had a WWSS executive session where we discussed property acquisition matters and our regular meeting, where the most significant thing that we did was we had the adoption that allowed for real allocation of the ownership that we had been talking about for the last couple of months. And thanks to staff for getting all the groundwork laid for that agreement to have been adopted. I won't say anything more about it because I'm sure you're gonna hear more, and staff can fill you in on all the details much better than I can. Yesterday, July 14, I attended the County CPO Number One meeting, where we got updates from the Park District, the Fire District, and the Sheriff on all the latest things happening related to COVID and just your general summer activity. But the main reason I wanted to attend the meeting was that there was a representative from the County Planning Staff, Teresa, and I'm sure I'm gonna butcher her last name, it was Cherniack, concerning the significant natural resource LCDC order enforcement that had been levied against the county and where they're having to rewrite their code, and it's going to affect residential developments, but it was really clear that it's not going to directly affect our projects going forward. But there's a lot of work at the county that needs to be done to get some clear and objective standards in their code on how to deal with significant natural resource areas and protection of trees that are designated significant. And then tonight's meeting. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
And thank you. Moving to Commissioner Sanders, your meetings attended.
Thank you, Commissioner. There's only one meeting for me in the last month, and that would be today's meeting. Very quiet month, unless we include personal hydraulic analysis of major rivers of Oregon in the West.
I think that's a really interesting way of spinning that.
Sometimes summer break is nice.
Personal hydraulic reconnaissance. All right. Commissioner Schmidt, your meetings attended.
Yes, on the 10th, I attended the Joint Water Commission, and we had a treatment plant update and some water rights issues. And then on the 14th, yesterday, I had a meeting with Tom and Bernice about the agenda items this evening and tonight's regular Board. That's all.
Thank you. And for my meetings attended, I seem to have more than you guys. I don't know what's going on here. On the 19th of June, I had a Joint Water Commission Executive Committee meeting where we talked about the chlorine contract and a Jacobs Amendment, Contract Amendment Change Order. On the 8th of July, I had a conference call with our CEO and legal counsel, which I very much appreciated because I had some questions about the Barney Reservoir Joint Operating Commission water rights, things that were going to come up at the JWC meeting, and I wanted to be prepared for that, and they very patiently took me through it and validated that the question I had was a reasonable question. Then on the 10th, I had the JWC BRJOC meeting. We discussed financials, contracts, the Operations Manual, which I have to admit, I did not read cover to cover, but I'm sure it's a fine piece of work, and I really appreciate Kerry Pack, Pete Boone, and Troy Van Rokel for working on that Operations Committee to put that together. I think it's an important piece of work. On the 14th, Dick Schmidt and I met with the CEO to do agenda planning, and then, of course, tonight's meeting for district business. So given that, moving to topics to be raised by the Commissioners, do we have any? I am hearing the sounds of silence.
Yeah, I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to the public comment period. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they're presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment at this time? Do we have any persons who would like to comment at this time? Again, sounds of silence, so I'll just move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items that are requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. And tonight, we have only one item on the consent agenda, and that is to approve the June seventeenth, twenty-twenty regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Jim Duggan.
Second, Jim Don.
We have a motion from Commissioner Duggan and a second from Commissioner Don. So if our district recorder would please, uh, do a roll call vote, that'll be peachy.
Commissioner Bagnall.
Yes.
Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
So there you have it, and I have a gavel, so the motion passes.
I like the gavel.
And I like that you and Tom conspired to order it for me. I feel so empowered. It's very cool. Moving to the business agenda. We need to consider, the first item is that we need to consider approving a motion to read by title only, Ordinance Zero-One-Dash-Twenty, Amending and Restating the Rules and Regulations for the Use of the Water, of the District's Water System. Receive oral testimony or written comments and adopt the ordinance. We'll have a staff report from our chief legal counsel, Clark Balfour.
Hopefully you can hear me and hopefully you can see me. So, uh, thank you, commissioners, uh, great to be here. And so what we have is, is just the second half of what we started a month ago. And, you know, work sessions and other discussions before that. So what's before you is the amendment and restatement of our rules and regulations. Uh, there's the staff report, I think, uh, reflects the changes that we're making, most notably to the reimbursement district processes. We've received no comments from the home builders or anyone else. Uh, there's been no further suggested changes by staff in the interim. Uh, so I, unless you have questions, I don't see a need to, um, you know, elongate the staff report anymore than to say that, uh, if there, unless there's public comment, I think that the board's in a position to act, to adopt. And then the rules and regulations will be effective thirty days from today, which would be, um, around August fifteenth, but I can't exactly remember. And I don't have my notes in front of me, I apologize.
Well, we can see you, and you looked very sincere, so apology accepted. Do I have, do I have a motion and a second to read by title only, the draft ordinance?
Uh, this is Dick, I so move.
Second, Jim Don.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schmidt and seconded by Commissioner Don. Um, Debbie, would you please do the roll call vote for us?
Commissioner Bagnall.
Yes.
Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Is this another gavel moment?
I, I need to read by, uh, title only, and then you can gabble it.
Oh, oh, I'd get carried away. I have a little power here, it went straight to my head, so.
I'm ready.
There is no one here to, to provide oral testimony, and we've received no written comments. So, please do read the ordinance title into the record.
Ordinance Number Zero-One-Dash-Twenty and Ordinance Amending and Restating Rules and Regulations for the Use of the District's Water System. Thank you very much.
Somehow I thought that would be longer. Do I have a motion?
I'll work on that next time.
Do I have a motion in a second to adopt Ordinance Zero-One-Dash-Twenty?
This is Todd, I so move.
This is Dick, I second.
You got it, Dick.
Commissioner Sanders moves. Commissioner Schmidt seconds. So Debbie, would you provide another roll call?
Commissioner Bagnall.
Yes.
Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
This is the gavel moment, right? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. The next business item we have is to consider approving the appointments of board offices, officers, and internal and external committee assignments for the two thousand twenty-twenty-one fiscal year as found in the proposed Board Appointments and Assignments Document. Um, Tom Hickman is going to help me out with this a little bit.
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm looking for my, uh, PDF on this, so I, I have it open. Let's see here. Sorry about that, I'm.
Not a worry. As you, as you do that, I would like to announce that I have been giving a lot of these assignments a lot of thought. And because there is currently no end in sight for our protocol of meeting via Zoom and Microsoft Teams, my proposal to the board was that we might be better off just to continue with our current assignments for another fiscal year. I, I believe it would simplify matters for staff if we keep things as they are. And I also think that it would prove very difficult for board members to transition to different external committees in particular without being able to meet in person and get comfortable and get up to speed. And so I have polled board members, and I have not gotten, I've, I've gotten assent to that and no dissent that I am aware of. So commissioners, if, if you do want to change a committee assignment or change, uh, board officers or anything like that, please do speak up. I strongly encourage that.
And what I, I, just so the board knows, so for what I, 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 I cannot get my, uh, display to show, I, I was just going to simply show the graphic of the committees, um, and who's appointed and the time that they've served. Uh, for some reason, I cannot get it to come up. I have everything else here, but I can't get that one up, so I apologize for that. Um, but, uh, essentially, that's, that's all I was going to do was show, uh, who's currently serving in what, uh, on what committees. And I'm happy, since I can't display it, I, I'm quite happy to, to talk my way through it if there's any questions.
Thanks, Debbie, for sending it to us in the chat.
Thank you, Debbie. You're always on it.
She's there for us, that's always. So as I, as I asked earlier, and I'll repeat, does anybody have anything they'd like to change or anything they'd like to suggest about the current assignments? Um, I, uh, please believe me. I, I am not wanting to just continue as president because I want to be president. I just honestly think that right now is not a good time to be making a lot of changes. But if anybody else wants to, has a burning desire to be board president, I will happily step aside.
This is Jim Don, I do not want to be president.
This is Dick, I do not want to be president.
This is Todd, I like Bernice's president.
Ditto for Jim Duggan.
You guys are not making it sound like a coveted assignment here. But I really appreciate the vote confidence.
You do a great job, Bernice.
Better you than me.
You do a great job, and it's appreciated.
Yes.
Okay, so are there any other changes that we need to make?
This is, this is.
Uh, this is Dick, I'm good with what I have.
The only change I would suggest is if we start meeting in person before there's a vaccine, then I would like to revisit this because I cannot meet in person.
Well, I'm beginning to think there's very little chance that will happen, Jim. And I, and I want to say that I am going to be an advocate for continuing to make this type of meeting available for those who are not comfortable for meeting in person, even when we do reopen the district. Because we just, you know, your health, all of our, all of our health is, is too big a price to pay for that.
This is Jim again, I, I'm sorry, Dick, go ahead.
Oh, this is Tom, and, and Commissioner Don, and I just wanted to reiterate, uh, what President Bagnell just said in that, uh, we have no intent to, uh, not make virtual meetings available uh, to all board members. Right now, it's going to be at least a year, uh, is what I, I think, and it could easily be longer than that, that we will continue to have, uh, virtual meetings, um, at least available, even if we have a vaccine. Um, I would suspect there's people that are, that are higher risk like yourself that still would not be comfortable. And so we would still make meetings available virtually, and I plan on doing that for some time.
But, and I want to acknowledge Commissioner Don, I especially appreciate your comments because at the JWC meeting, they indicated they might be meeting in person in October. And I can certainly understand where you would have concerns about serving on the JWC if that was the only way you could attend. So we'll, we'll keep an open mind about that.
This is Jim again, thank you for your understanding.
So the problem with showing yourself on the camera is when you set your script aside and lose your place on it, it's like really obvious to everyone, isn't it? But I have found it now, so. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the appointments of board officers and internal and external committee assignments for the twenty-twenty dash twenty-one fiscal year as found in the proposed board assignments, appointments and assignments document?
This is Todd, I move. Sorry, Jim, go ahead.
No, you go ahead. Your turn.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, this is Todd Sanders, I move.
Uh, this is Dick, I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Sanders and seconded by Commissioner Schmidt. So, um, Debbie, would you please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall.
Yes.
Commissioner Don.
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion passes. We will now move to an informational presentation, and it is an update on the district's financial performance with a staff report from CFO Paul Matthews.
Well, you've been President Bagnall, commissioners, uh, take you through this presentation. I'm trying to keep the presentation similar to what you've seen in the past, but yet try to add some new material, uh, to at least try to make it interesting. But we'll see how we've done here as you go through the presentation. So the actual, uh, overview of tonight's presentation is the same as it has been in the past. I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to, um, cover, uh, some national economic trends, talk about the, the, uh, consumers' economic health because those are the people that, uh, were asking to pay their water bills, some of their behaviors, because macroeconomic trends as well. And then I'm going to talk about TVWD's financial, uh, situation, both from a revenue as well as collection and expense perspective. So let's get at it. First, I want to orient you to this slide because this is a new slide that I've presented here. Not the content of the slide so much as just overview of what we are presenting. Uh, the gray bars that you see running down the middle of the slide show when the United States has been in an economic recession in the past. So it gives us somewhat of a standard presentation of this data. And what we're looking at in this particular slide are federal receipts. And the point here is before we got into the COVID-nineteen situation, things, uh, at the fiscal side for the country were going pretty well. The economy was growing, employment was growing, and, uh, things were just kept cooking along. And there really wasn't much, uh, much concern until we did hit the COVID-nineteen. And here you can see what happened with initial jobless claims. I'm not going to spend too much time on it, but when we hit that time in March, it immediately jumped. We've talked about that, uh, in the past. But as you can see, it has come down where the initial jobless claims are much, much lower than they were just a few months ago, but yet much higher than they have been in the recent past. So we still have an issue with the labor market. Uh, if we look at the total number of employees and presented here are the number of employees in, uh, thousands, so this would be, um, hundreds of millions when you look at the units on the left-hand side. Uh, you can see that sharp decline, and you can see a rebound. But yet again, a strong rebound. Uh, we've seen the news report about the strong rebound, but the, that strong rebound still has not resulted in, uh, getting us back to the levels that we were before. I want to present that same information as, jump back. This is with the scale, uh, going from a hundred and fifty-five thousand to one fifteen. And I've showed you this before in another slide having to do with our, our per capita consumption. Uh, these look very dramatic, but if we change the scale going from zero to, uh, to the numbers, it is slightly less dramatic, but nevertheless, it is a huge change in the employment picture, uh, within the country. Uh, looking again at compensation for employees, uh, dropped as you would expect. Uh, total compensation again because people weren't working. Uh, but interestingly enough, average hourly earnings went up. So how, how could that be? Well, average hourly workers is, our average hourly earnings are only the earnings of people that are working. So what this tells us is that those people that were laid off early on during this recession, uh, that they were relatively at the lower end of, of the economic spectrum. And that's because they were largely in service jobs, and some of their compensation was through tips and other things that necessarily part of their hourly earnings. So we can see there was actually kind of this uptick for those who remained in the employment. Uh, we looked at comparing this to other federal response. This is, uh, transfer receipts. So this is payments coming from, uh, the federal government as well as, uh, state governments through unemployment benefits. Uh, what's happened in this, uh, recession versus past recessions? Uh, the recession that we had, uh, back after nine eleven, uh, there wasn't a large increase in transfer payments, and the economy jumped back pretty quickly. The, uh, financial crisis that we had, the so-called Great Recession that occurred, you can see that there was somewhat of an increase in, um, somewhat of an increase in transfer receipts. But look at what we've done in this recession. And, and this is important because we offset quite a bit of that loss in, in, uh, in earnings uh, through transfer payments. And in fact, uh, we have quite a few workers who are making more in unemployment than they were with, uh, when they were employed. And that's provided them with a cushion of economic capability. That's fine, except that cushion is running out at the end of August. So we've got to, uh, see what's going to be happening here. Taking it all together, a slight increase in personal income during that same period of time. Uh, now, one of the interesting facts is what's happened to the personal savings rate. So the personal savings rate, when you can't go out and spend money at your favorite drinking establishment, you aren't flying on airplanes, uh, there are some force savings that has gone on. You can see during the, uh, early part of, of the, uh, COVID emergency, personal savings rates jumped hugely. We haven't seen numbers like this since this statistic, uh, was, uh, being collected. I think this statistics are being collected in, uh, right after the Second World War in the late forties. Uh, and it's never gotten up to, to that kind of level. It has been up as high as ten percent. In fact, you can see that happening right, uh, after we got out of the Great Re- Great Recession where it ticked up here, uh, in the, uh, early part of, uh, this decade. Or actually, to the last decade. Uh, so what's happened to their personal consumption expenditures? People aren't spending money, they're saving it, and that is having secondary effects in the economy. Uh, and just as an example, uh, my, uh, son and I went out shopping for a used vehicle for him. We found the used auto market was extraordinarily hot. In fact, he had two vehicles bought out from under him. I'd never seen anything quite like this before. I must say, I haven't bought that many used cars in my life, but still it seemed to be pretty, uh, a pretty hot market. And frankly, uh, we. And frankly, we were hearing that from sales folks. Of course, everybody talks about their vehicle being worth a lot more than what you might want to offer, but there was some evidence of that. But the new car market dropped down as people had that personal savings. My hypothesis here is they're seeing their bank account balances go up. They're worried about the future. They don't know if they're going to have income, so they don't want a car payment. But a, but a used car is something that they were willing to, to purchase. But new cars, you're seeing is starting to rebound, but light vehicle sales are still pretty much affected. And, you know, real retail, when, when we say real, we're talking about adjusted for inflation. So this has the inflationary effects taken out. Food service and retail taking the bulk of, of the hit. We turn to the macroeconomic side of this. You know, one of the things that we talk about the business cycle, we don't talk about that as much anymore, but it used to be that you'd see oftentimes a buildup in inventories. And that a recession that we would have would be because businesses started to build up inventory as the economy slowed and they were, their production got ahead of where they were. We have not seen a buildup of inventories as driving this, this recession. In fact, inventories were growing about the same rate as the economy in general. So the economy has, as the economy grows, inventories do grow, and that's a natural part of, of allowing the economy to grow. But this recession obviously is caused by COVID-19, and it's not part of the business cycle at all. But what we do see is capacity utilization. So one of the, the metrics that the Federal Reserve measures is the utilization of the nation's factories. And they actually, during their survey, asked factories at what level of utilization they have, and that has dropped dramatically. And that typically happens when people build up inventory, they pull back. This happened because there was a sense that the workers couldn't report, and there was concern about producing things into the recession itself. And the big thing that we've seen here is the labor force participation rate. We had been seeing the labor force participation rate decline and start to recover, and then we took the big hit right here during the COVID-19 crisis. So it started to recover over this period of time. But this is the function of baby boomers retiring as well as the COVID-19 hit. So we're seeing a lot of slack in the economy, both from utilization of factories as well as the labor market. Taken together, inflation doesn't seem to be something that we're concerned about, at least the economists aren't. A little bit of a surprise to me. I've been concerned about it because I think productivity is taking a real hit. The sense is that if the economy starts to pick up, the slack in utilization and the labor market will be able to be employed and will will avoid any inflation. I worry though that productivity taking a real hit that until we get a vaccine, productivity may not go back to its pre-pandemic levels. So that's pretty much what I want to talk about on the, on the national economy. Just get through that real quick. And what we're seeing here in Washington County reflects that. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about Washington County. Same report on TVWD. There's really no change from industrial, from industry perspective. We're an essential utility service with a strong credit. I'll talk here in the next slide about our recent affirmation of our AA+ credit by Fitch. I don't know if you've heard that yet. It'll certainly be in Thursday memo, I suspect, but I'll talk about it just here in a bit. So we're still being viewed in that regard. Customers, the ability to pay bills will depend on their individual circumstances. Still, Washington County is in better shape than the rest of, of the metro area and the state in general. And our current policy on turnovers may complicate customers' ability to become current. I'll talk about that in, in a bit, too. So before I shift off, any questions about this? And I'm going to kind of turn the topic to our credit rating with Fitch.
That's great news about Fitch.
I'll jump right to it. It is great news. And, you know, with everything going on with the COVID-19, I was concerned that maybe that would have, you know, they're both Fitch, S and both Fitch and S and P, the two that we have ratings with, are looking at COVID-19 as they should. That's their job. And trying to assess what that's doing to utilities. Back early on in the, in April, S and P actually came out and had some negative sort of feelings about the utility business, given concerns about shut-off moratorium and, and just what's happening to demands, especially with commercial industrial customers. They've since come back a bit and given the strong liquidity that utilities have throughout the country and the fact that we do have strong pricing capabilities, given our monopoly, being a natural monopoly, they've come back and give a, sort of backed away from their somewhat dour outlook on, on the sector. So yeah, this is great news. I did not want to see a downgrade as we're looking at re-executing our WIFI loan. I don't think that would have affected it, but that was a conversation I prefer not to have. So we are very happy as we go into our re-execution of our WIFI loan that we won't be dealing with a, any change to our credit rating. But a few takeaways from the report itself. We need to maintain adequate funds available for debt service going forward. One of the things that Fitch does is they break down our entire financial capability into a few metrics. And one of them is funds available for debt service, which is essentially a modification, what we would call net revenues. Strong defensibility of, of, of our revenue, a low operating risk. And, and we do need to address the risk to revenues and expenses from COVID-19. And I, I think that is an imperative for us. We'll be under surveillance for, with them. And, and I think we want to maintain that discipline that we're keeping those funds to bill our debt service, that we're making reasonable adjustments to our expenses in light of the revenue shortfalls that we're having from COVID-19. And that we're doing the responsible thing and demonstrating our commitment to strong financial performance. So that's pretty much what we learned from our experiment, our experience with Fitch. We've not heard from S and P, and I'm not sure if they're going to do a surveillance call this year or not. So like I said, we will include the, the Fitch rating in our Thursday memo, and of course, this is available at Fitch's website if you were curious. Any questions, though, about this, this point, or should I move on? Seeing none, I will move on. Did want to talk about the WIFIA re-execution, and I think this is an important opportunity for us to, to further lower our cost of capital and help our customers afford the water supply program. I did recalculate the numbers. So what you see in this presentation is different from what you got in email last night. I updated for today's interest rates. Unfortunately, went up four basis points, but I tell you, I would be more than happy with a 1.28% rate on this. A realistic planning rate is maybe 1.4. I don't see huge changes in interest rates over the next six weeks, which is when we plan to re-execute with them. It really, the ball is in their court right now. But it's my understanding that their schedule is about six weeks to complete the work that needs to be done. The potential savings at 1.4 is between 110, 120 million dollars. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, but I love looking at 1.28. Just looked at it earlier today. That would save us about $3.7 million per year in debt service. That can really help us keep our rates affordable and offset some of the revenue challenges that we're having with COVID-19. So this re-execution is an important part of our financial strategy going forward. I'm going to pause here to see if there are any questions about the WIFIA re-execution. I don't know if we've really talked about it much. So if there are questions.
I am very, very excited about it, Paul, and I want to thank you for all your hard work on this. And I, I think I already know the answer to this question, but just to share it with the rest of the board, is Hillsborough also looking at refinancing?
Yeah, Hillsborough is going to be doing it. The savings aren't as dramatic for them because they closed two weeks after us. As their interest rate was 1.98, but they'll still see some savings as well. So yeah, it'll help Hillsborough as well. And, and we're coordinating this, so we're going to be doing it together. At least that's my ask of Hillsborough. That it's going to be easier if, if we're going to the EPA with the same facts presenting them. So we've been very careful to coordinate as we put together our official borrower request as well as answering some of the questions that EPA has. And of course, we share bond council with Hillsborough, too. Both of us use the same bond council, so that'll make it very efficient.
Well, and I just think, you know, it's also much better for both of us as partners on this huge project that we go forward on the same footing.
Yeah, yeah, it really is. I definitely agree, and Hillsborough staff so far agrees with that as well. So we're pretty excited about that opportunity, too. One thing that I do want to mention is there was an email to, one of our board members came from a consultant in the community, talked about an interest rate for WIFIA of 0.65%. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that is erroneous. There's, the WIFIA interest rate is not 0.65. It is based on your, with average life of your loan, and it ties back to the, what's called the sludge rate, which is a particular kind of a treasury issue that's used by state and local governments to defeat debt. And even it's, it's a formula under law, how you calculate that, you take that sludge rate, you add one basis point to it, and that's your WIFIA rate. So that information that was presented by the consultant was, I think, a little bit off. The lowest that it has been, though, was during last fall, when we had kind of a combination of a currency war and an oil price war. Actually, the rate got down to about 0.9%. And that's as low as it's, it's ever been, and that was an anomaly. So in any event, I, I think a 1.4% is where we'll be, but that 0.65 was either a typo or just maybe a misunderstanding, one of the two.
Paul?
Yes?
This is Todd. A few months ago, you had brought to the board a discussion about how we were going to take on debt over the next five years. And as, as a board, we had recommended a somewhat conservative, not very risky approach. With this change in interest rate and potential savings, is this enough of a savings to revisit that decision? Or is this just going to be, I guess, icing on the cake for us?
Yeah. So that's a good question. Two parts to that answer. First is the action that we took is we, we issued what's called a parity certificate, which essentially activated $250 million of our WIFIA loan. One of the questions that we have for EPA's counsel and for our bond counsel is will we need to issue a new parity certificate, or will that existing parity certificate be applicable to the re-executed WIFIA loan? Our hope is that it is applicable because it does cost as many to have our bond council. They have to issue an opinion as well, and my preference would be able to roll that over and keep it. So, so having said that, does the interest rate itself cause us to take advantage and say, let's go for a larger amount? It might. I'd say might because in a sense, we're going to be dealing with this cash flow issue based on interest rates on the ground at the time. But as you go through the re-execution, I mentioned before, it's all based on this concept of a weighted average life of a loan. So the weighted average life of our existing WIFIA loan is 28 years, or no, sorry, 27 years, two months. If, based on the lower interest rates and the fact we have our capitalized interest, the fact that we haven't taken a draw so far, our weighted average life would be more like 25 years, two months. And we can restructure and bring some of the money that we are planning on taking in 2025 and 2026. We can pull that money forward and still keep our weighted average life low so we can have that lower interest rate. If we do that, there may be some advantage of coming back with a parity certificate to activate that money early on and not go to, to the bond market for traditional revenue bonds. But if we do traditional revenue bonds, we'll still need to do a parity certificate in order to access that money. I say that all this may be based on interest rates because with yield curve, yield curve is interest rates over time. So interest rates at a shorter maturity, the interest rates are much lower. It's quite possible that TVWD will issue what I affectionately call weigh-ins with the anticipation notes, but we may issue short-term debt that we then take out with our WIFIA loan when we get to the end of the construction program. So essentially, we would go out and get maybe one or two-year notes. And if, and do that at a lower interest rate than, lower than our WIFIA loan, we can do that now. If interest rates go up, well, then we just simply roll into our WIFIA money. So all these things are going to be very fluid as we look at market conditions and look at the other fact we need to look in, to look at is how much money we're going to want to borrow in the traditional revenue market, revenue bond market. This may sound crazy, but we may want to borrow money earlier on to lock in rates if they are favorable and have what we would call negative arbitrage a little bit and spend our money down. So Todd, this is a very complicated question. And well, maybe the question isn't that complicated, but there's a lot of fact that just the market will tell us what is the most cost-effective way to go. So for right now, we wouldn't need to change that initial $250 million. We'll keep that where it is. But we can pull the trigger on that at any time that it becomes in the district's interest to do that. So stay tuned. Did I answer your question?
You did. I will stay tuned. Thank you.
I probably answered your question about four more that you didn't ask.
We've got you, Paul.
Yeah, you can always talk a lot, Paul. It's cool by me. I learn every time I hear you speak.
I want to make sure I do answer your question. So on from, anything else on WIFIA, though? It's a good news story, and we're really excited about it. We're going to, of course, pursue this vigorously. Slipping back into our standard deduction, again, our standard discussion on our financial performance. We're looking at from three perspectives: revenues, collections, and expenses. And we do have news on, on all three fronts. More information than, than we've had in prior months. We'll kind of walk through those. Nothing has changed here. We still have the same challenges that we've had before in terms of looking at forecast of revenue, by monthly billing, our block rate structure, the weather, Beaverton COVID-19, all these things. And a lack of a good leading indicator, something that we can look at that helps us predict what future revenues are. So these are the challenges we have, and the leading here that we're looking at is our water deliveries. And so what, what I have presented here, and you've seen this before, is continuation of the graph that shows our water deliveries. Our most recent amount in this solid blue line is compared to the five-year average. Now, it's important to know that, that you can see last summer, we really were behind quite a bit on water sales. And that has continued, in fact, through the pre-COVID period. We had a little bit of a bump above that, and now we're back below, below trend line. And so we're starting to see two months in a row and in terms of total water sales, and, and that is, is a growing concern. Next, we look at was the per capita consumptions. This is just looking at the residential class and it's looking at their consumption. This is a 12-month rolling average. So what that means, this number here is over a 12-month rolling average. This number is that five-year rolling average. So we just take 60 months and we add the newest month. We drop the oldest month in this for the history. This one, we take the most recent 12 months and, and we report it. And, and this is a rather dramatic drop. And again, I'm going to show you compare when we change the scale. This is from 90 to 110 gallons per cap, and I'm going to change the scale and put it into a little bit different perspective, so it doesn't look quite as dramatic. It's important for us to see these things in both scales because it really does have effect. But this is a significant reduction in, in our, in our water sales. But as you can see, it predates COVID. So we aren't necessarily seeing a, a change yet from COVID. It is a moving average, so it's going to take a while to express itself. And that's why we're watching it. The other thing, though, I'm looking at the numbers in detail. And some utilities are actually seeing residential water sales go up as people stay home, work from home. We aren't seeing that. And again, it's hard to discern if, if, if it's, again, weather-related as compared to prior years or if it's related to the mix of customers that Beaverton withdrew. But we aren't seeing that sort of strengthening in the residential class that some utilities are, are seeing. But we aren't seeing that sort of strengthening in the residential class that uh some utilities are are seeing. So I'm going to pause here because I think we do have a question on this and uh and see if we can answer answer that.
So Paul, this is Todd. Um, the the slide prior or this one, I guess the slide prior makes me happier to look at because the the one thing I noticed about this slide was the positive slope in March through September of nineteen versus the negative slope in the um twelve-month rolling average. You know, the inverse proportionality or the inverse correlation between the trends. And I found that really intriguing. Um, and I think I see it again right towards the end of your data, starting in about April of twenty twenty. You have the upward trend in the historic rolling data. And then we're again seeing another downward trend in our present day per capita water sale data. I I, one of the questions I was going to ask you earlier was how this was computed and you answered that by saying that this was residential only data.
Yeah.
What else? Any thoughts? I get, oh, before I ask you any thoughts. Is um per capita water sales a common metric across all water utilities?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a uh, it's a fairly common uh metric uh to look at. It's a good indicator of of sales. One of the challenges that we have is estimating our population, given the withdrawals from Beaverton. And so we get a estimate of our population uh every every year from PSU and we recalibrate to that level. The PSU Population Center, Population Center PSU, we recalibrate to that level and then we interpolate between those points of time where we have the PSU data by uh uh by sales of uh meters, uh connections to the system, SDCs uh as a proxy for how the population is growing. So when we have those resets uh, that that can cause a dislocation. But I the thing that bothers me right now about looking at these numbers is the population estimate and getting a good sense of what our population is over that period of time, given that we had a withdrawal of customers from Beaverton over that same period of time.
What time um, what year or I guess what estimate of year and month did the withdraw occur? Do you remember?
Yeah, well, it varied by area. Um, and I well, okay, so there's two parts to that. Actually, it's not the withdraw. I was a little sloppy in my language when I said withdraw. It's actually when they transfer service. So when when Beaverton withdraws a customer, we continue to serve them just as if they're retail customer. And then at a point, they transfer that service from what we call the interim service, where we treat them just like a TVWD customer. And they are in this mix as if they are being served at retail. And we transfer them into a wheeling SASS, which time they come out of these numbers. And for each of the service areas that were withdrawn, we did that at a different time. And I I'm going to see if uh Carrie Pack has a memory that can help out on that. Carrie, do you uh, or did I just put you on spot unfairly?
You did. I was trying to remember um, remember the timeframe. The all of the withdrawal happened, um, the first withdrawal happened in July of twenty nineteen. And um, and then the um wheeling, they went to wheeling. I want to say, oh, it was in, it was in April, March, April.
Well, there was a small amount in November. Yeah, there's a small amount in November of twenty eighteen.
Yes. And then and then if the the biggest area went to um wheeling in twenty March, April timeframe of twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Remember, because we had the snow.
Yes.
Ice thing that we wanted to avoid.
Boy, yeah, it was April, April, March that that occurred.
Does that help?
It does.
Uh, I prefer this graph because it's less scary. This one keeps me awake. This one lets me sleep.
Arbitrarily using zero on your Y-axis because it's zero?
Well, I feel like this is arbitrarily using ninety. Uh, so any bit, yeah, you get the idea. But full disclosure, it does, the scale does kind of have an effect psychologically on what we on what we feel about these things. Uh, Commissioner Sanders, did you have any other questions about that?
Uh, so would this data be available to the general public? Or do we see it only because we're board members?
Uh, well, it is, now it's a public record. Uh, so uh, there's no reason why we can't make this available to the general public. I don't know if anybody's ever requested it, uh, but there's nothing in here that is the slight bit. I, it's to me, it's public information. It ought to be shared with the public. There's nothing in here that's um it concerns me. It's just data.
Okay. Yeah, it is just data. That's why I like you, Paul. It's just data.
It's just data. It's
Just numbers.
Just numbers to get moved around.
It's data that has dollars attached.
Yeah, it's data of consequence, right? So looking underneath the numbers and trying to discern, I can't emphasize enough that this is still you know, all those defects that we were talking about earlier about our billing cycles and the challenges that we have to get around is this is the stuff that I'm seeing right now and I want to highlight this for for your uh consideration. Residential demand, it's lagging, but it's consistent with prior years. I am not seeing in these numbers anything that I would say is COVID-related at this point. Uh, just seems to be lagging as it was before. I was hoping to see a recovery in these numbers and we're not seeing that. Uh, it continues to be lagging. On the commercial side, there does appear to be a trending downward uh in the last month and a half. Um, I'm starting to see uh those numbers soften. So uh, we're not seeing uh recovery uh of those numbers as as people have gone back to work, restaurants are opening. And again, we have a two-month billing cycle. So we'll have to see what what that is. It's not a big part of our of our uh uh, of our water sales, uh, but twenty-five percent or so or twenty percent. But uh, that is uh soft. Production, which is large demand typically, our industrial customers, strong. And uh, this may be because those customers were not part of the Beaverton withdrawal. Uh, and so maybe that class was relatively left intact. Irrigation, it's lagging consistent with prior years too. It's, we're seeing irrigation off uh, which uh would make sense if it's weather-related. So uh, commercial is something that we're watching and as you might expect, if restaurants are closed down, they're not doing dishes, they're doing other things. Or if they're operating at fifty percent capacity, they're going to be doing fewer dishes. We are seeing softness there. Uh, we're not seeing an uptick though in residential that other utilities around the country are reporting. We just aren't seeing that yet. Uh, and that could be noise in our data. So um now I want to change topics on you here. And so first, in advance, uh, I want to apologize. This is a esoteric, crazy accounting discussion that we're fixing to have here. Uh, and so the issue here is how we do our year-end accounting accruals. And for those of you that have read the month-end review uh in past years, we get into June, July, we enter into this crazy period where our accrual adjustments are affecting our reported numbers. So here's what the story is. First of all, the issue is is our generally accepted accounting principles, the gap requires TVWD to accrue revenue in the fiscal year for when water is delivered. So that would be uh, water that's delivered before June thirty, but billed after June thirty. So this is a standard revenue recognition issue. Water goes through the meter. We read the meter, let's say sometime in August. Some of that water happened before June thirty, we're required to make an accrual adjustment. So generally in September, we're able to run uh the prorations out of our billing system that pro rates that based on the number of days in a billing cycle. So each bill is looked at, the computer does this mathematics for us and gives us an adjustment. This is an industry standard approach. So I want to give you kind of an example here so that you can see what's what's going on. A customer, just hypothetically, customers build on August fifth for water that was delivered between June first and July thirty first. The billing cycle sixty days, thirty days happened before June thirty, thirty days happened after. We split that bill fifty-fifty. So we're splitting that water between two periods. What that tells us is that water consumption that happens after July one actually affects our cruel adjustment because in September, we start looking at that number, it'll affect our cruel adjustment and our revenue recognition prior to June thirty. So that's how that methodology works. Just real quickly and apologize for this. First of all, this is a waterfall chart. Uh, so the blue bars is the pluses, the uh orange bar is a minus and the gray bar is the net. So if we look at twenty eighteen, when we did our calendar year accrual or uh the current year accrual rather, the current year accrual for that year, June thirty, we added eight point two million dollars of revenue in fiscal year twenty eighteen. The prior year, we have to subtract out about six million. The net amount was we added two point two million dollars in twenty eighteen to our revenue. In twenty nineteen, well, we had an eight point two million dollar reduction. That's orange bar, which is the blue bar from the prior year, right? So we had recognized that in the prior year, we added seven point eight million. And this year, we actually had a negative adjustment of five hundred thousand dollars that is in twenty nineteen. So what's happening in twenty twenty? This is the thing that has me concerned. I'm looking out there, I'm seeing the weather. Yeah, it was warm today, but but we're not selling a lot of water. I know that we have seven point eight million dollars uh, from the prior year that we're going to have to adjust. That's here. How much water sales is this adjustment going to be? If it's something low like five million dollars, we could have a two point seven million dollar adjustment. I took five million dollars as arbitrary amount, but uh it could be a much lower amount. In prior years, when you had a thirteen percent rate increase, you tended to have these higher numbers. Now, uh, we have a much smaller rate increase. We're unlikely to have those gains through revenue. So for those of you who care about accrual adjustments, we're carrying this risk. So when I tell you what's going on in the revenue side, I'm really worried about the revenue that we're going to be recognizing for fiscal year twenty twenty, that we're going to be measuring this September after the summer is over. All right. So where do we stand now? Water sales in July and August will affect our cruel calculation. I've been reporting a recent estimate of three and a half to four million dollars from revenue shortfall. That will depend on the final accrual adjustment. I thought we were going to be making up ground, looking at the data. We lost ground uh, in June. So right now, my estimate is that number could be as much as a five million dollar, uh, five to six million dollar revenue shortfall. But it's all going to depend on what happens this summer and how that accrual adjustment comes forward. There's nothing we can do until we actually get those meters read and uh and in uh September, run the report. So from my perspective, prudent financial management suggests that we continue to manage our costs and our revenues as we have been doing all along. Because our revenues, I think, are going to be weaker than what I've been reporting to you over the past several months. And again, it's, if we just look at the numbers today, uh, the picture isn't isn't as intimidating. But I'm looking at this accrual adjustment. I'm saying, I'm not sure we can bank on that. And I don't want to present a rosy picture now and have a very frustrating situation develop later on. So I want to get that uh fully disclosed to you as you consider the policies uh going forward, that we have this accrual adjustment that's presenting a risk. So I went through that kind of quick. It's an esoteric topic. Uh, if anybody wants to go through, we can sit down one of these days over a beer and we can draw tea accounts on a napkin or something like that. But uh, the risk of of alienating everybody on this call, let me just ask if there are any questions about this. The takeaway picture is more revenue at risk than what we've been reporting over the last couple of months. Yet still speculative. Because we don't have those numbers and can't have them until September.
So are there questions, other questions from the board?
None for me.
To slip into talking about uh the collections, uh, we have been tracking collections. One of the things uh, that we have been doing is uh our customer service group is uh has implemented a protocol to call customers and to reach out to them and uh uh and encourage a payment. As you can see, we did have, uh, this is looking at our average age account receivables. It's a synthetic metric that we've created from the data that we have. We do see that there is a uh uh, a reduction from May to June. And I think that is uh in part related to the collection efforts that we have. One of the things that we're very cognizant of is, again, as I talked earlier, when we're talking about the economic situation, is that right now some of our customers do have resources. I'm concerned that if they have outstanding bills, we want to help them get those bills resolved now. Uh, because it may be more difficult for them to get two or three bills resolved later when they have less resources available to them. So customer services is working hard to get in front of those customers and get those phone calls made. Uh, day sales outstanding, we talked about this last month. It's a way of looking at uh how much our account receivables are. It's another metric that we typically look at. And you can see that starting to grow in June. Um, that may be uh reflecting uh customers that are rolling over. Uh, we are seeing some customers pay the bill, but there may be some that are continuing to roll over. Uh, one of the numbers that we do have now on this, Commissioner Sanders, you had asked the question. We've been reporting uh our um, our delinquencies and dollar amounts. Uh, but how much that is related to water versus centers who earn service water management bills? Uh, so this is our estimate of what that is over the past few weeks. Uh, the red line that you see here presents the number of people who would be shut off if we had not had a shut-off moratorium. Uh, now typically, once they're shut off, that number drops down considerably, right? Because they would be, uh, they restore service. Uh, so typically, we wouldn't see this at this level. All got up to about sixteen hundred for two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, those calls brought it down. Uh, billing cycles add back up. So you kind of see it go back and forth. It's now down to about um a thousand thirty customers and the total amount of delinquencies that we have right now is just under three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so that's, that's where we are. And this is water only. Uh, the numbers we were presenting before in sort of that four hundred uh plus thousand-dollar range included the effects of sewer. Right now, it's going to vary based on the time of the year. As we head into summer, the water bill dominates. As we head into the winter, the sewer bill dominates. Uh, it's about fifty-five to sixty percent of the bills coming out right now are water. And that's the split that we have.
Hey, Paul, could I point out here that um it was right around uh beginning of July when our customer service agents started reaching out and calling uh our customers. So you can see that pretty dramatic climb from decline from uh fifteen seventy down to a thousand thirty. And uh, I I I believe that's a direct reflection of uh, our customer service staff actually be becoming proactive and now we are actually contacting customers um, to find out what what it is, the, what's the challenge that's preventing them from paying their bill? Uh, what can we do to help them uh so they can can get current? So uh, I think that's why we see this downward pressure here um from fifteen seventy to a thousand uh, is from that. And we're going to be continuing to do that um to try to get that number back down.
Yeah. So one of the other things, uh, looking at our COVID nineteen expenses, we actually submitted uh to Washington County for some CARES Act to get reimbursed for some of our direct expenses. Uh, so let's talk about what that is. This is a snapshot of the actual application amount that we have. And it shows uh really uh what our costs are. So the first column that you see here are cost to date. Uh, and this is pretty current. This is as of uh last week. Uh, we've uh the biggest item, and unfortunately, I did not format this very well because we have decimal points on some and not the others. Uh, the bottom line here is that uh, uh, the biggest line item that we have here is uh the uh uh, the temporary leave that was mandated under the extended FEMLA, Family Medical Leave Act. I think it's, I think it's extended or enhanced. I can't remember. That would be something that uh, our HR director could could uh certainly tell us. Uh, and then the other one is the operations of the emergency operating center. So the staff charge their time to a project number and we uh accumulate those dollars and recover those. So uh, we're got about a hundred and thirty-six thousand of costs we've incurred to date. We're estimating that uh through twelve thirty-one, another hundred thousand. And uh, so a total of about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of uh reimbursement that we're requesting through the CARES Act. Uh, that's at Washington County now. that we're requesting through the CARES Act, uh, that's at Washington County now. And we'll see how, uh, that progresses. But that's our ask. That's a good indicator of what our actual costs, uh, are that we've incurred for, uh, the COVID. And, uh, so I want to highlight some of the other things. Obviously, uh, CEO Hickman has asked us to, uh, tighten our belts and to be very cognizant. Uh, we're not filling staff vacancies, uh, right now without CEO approval. Uh, and we're, we're trying to save as much money as possible. And so this is, uh, we just finished fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Obviously, the numbers are still approximate because we will have invoices that come in over the coming weeks that will be charged against two thousand and twenty. So these numbers are 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 still preliminary. But on the personnel services side, uh, we've got about two point, two and a half million dollars of savings. Some of that is because we've had very attractive, uh, healthcare re-up cost. Our renewal rates on our healthcare have been fabulous. And, uh, we didn't anticipate, uh, that as much. And we've held vacancies. So we have about two, uh, two point five million, two, by the time we're done, uh, two and a half million dollars of savings there. On the material and services side, uh, about a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars of training education. Obviously, we're not traveling right now, so the training that we're doing is is much cheaper. Uh, on the other end, yes, we've excluded purchased water and pumping power because that isn't something that we can control directly. About another one point three five million dollars of savings that we have. Uh, the other item that I highlight here is that as we funded the, uh, district site account, we qualified for an eight hundred sixty-one thousand dollar matching, a match from, uh, the state's employer incentive fund. So that's savings that, uh, we have as well. So in total, we've got just under five million dollars of savings that, uh, that we've, uh, been able to accumulate. Now, on the purchased water side, we've probably got another couple million dollars of savings there uh, that, uh, that will be available. Again, this is to fund over the entire biennium though. So we want to make sure that, uh, we don't, uh, post that mission accomplished sign just a little bit too early. So on the on the saving side, I think we are in good shape. If we keep this discipline, uh, this will help us cover that revenue shortfall that I'm talking about. So you might say, wait a minute, you talked about a six million dollar revenue shortfall. And now you're showing me four point nine million dollars of savings. That doesn't seem to match. But we do have some savings, uh, on the purchased water side that will help offset that. Our SDCs were higher this year, above plan. Uh, don't want to commit to that. A, first of all, those are dedicated for capital projects, but I'm also concerned that, uh, SDCs may not return. We haven't seen the SDCs return. We've seen uptick in development, but I haven't seen an uptick in actual receipts on SDCs yet. So, uh, very cautious about about that as well. So where do we stand, uh, right now? Uh, we're, we've got some savings. I think we want to hold on to those savings in anticipation of these revenue shortfalls. And again, this helps us have that difficult conversation with people like Bitch and S and P, uh, that we are making adjustments and that we can make adjustments, uh, to keep, uh, the district, uh, financially sound as we navigate these, uh, COVID waters, so to speak. Uh, so with that, any questions on, uh, strategies for savings in two thousand and twenty? And Tom, did you want to say anything about that or?
Yeah. So so Commissioner Doan, this is getting to what you asked earlier. Um, so, you know, right now, what it's showing is we're essentially, uh, we're we're close to offsetting the loss in revenues that we've seen, uh, with what we've done. Um, but I think we're going to have to wait till the end of September to really know for sure where we're at. Um, and then we can make a decision on, uh, the remaining increase, um, beyond what we gave to all staff, um, to to make up that, to to opt, to make them whole.
Uh, this is Jim Doan. Thank you. That is what, uh, we discussed, uh, in the spring when we gave the two percent was that we wouldn't really know until September. My question was really, can we make up the difference for the employees who retired since their final years are based on, uh, you know, their salary? And so they have missed out, if there is an increase, a second increase in September, they have missed out on, uh, on that increase. Whereas if we would have given it to them in the spring, then they would have picked up a couple of months of the new increase. That's all. That was my only question.
Oh, I I didn't, uh, yeah, and I don't think I answered your question correctly. So, um, if they have retired, I don't think we can adjust their salary because their final average salary would have been calculated at the time of retirement.
I don't think that's what I I don't, I don't think that's what he's asking. If I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, what he's saying is is somebody who they got a two percent here in June. And when you get to end of September, if there's a comfort level to say, okay, let's give the full merit increase, that that same individual missed out, let's say, on another two percent for three months. And those three months would have set a higher, uh, average, um, for somebody who was retiring. I think that's what what Commissioner Doan is asking. Am I capturing that correct?
Yes, that is, that is cap, that is a good capture. On the other hand, I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference. Uh, you know, two percent for, oh, what, three, three sixtieths of a year? I don't think it's going to make any difference. If it was something else, then I'd like to be able to go back. But having worked PERS twenty years ago, I don't think that such a mechanism exists. I mean, PERS goes back and pulls, uh, about eight hundred dollars a month out of my check for, uh, an overly overly generous interest rate. But I don't think they'd be happy about trying to increase employees who have already retired. I was just curious if something had happened in the past twenty years that would allow us to to make these employees whole.
Yeah, I think once they've retired, I think it, the the book is closed.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions? That really brings me to the end of my presentation. Any other questions about this? And apologize for taking you through kind of a a detailed discussion. Uh, I love talking about this stuff, uh, and I appreciate that not everybody does. So apologize for that. But no other questions? I'll turn it back to President Bagnall.
Well, thank you, Paul, very much. That was, that was a lot of information. And it's always interesting. So are there other questions from board members? Hearing none, we have reached the end of all of our agenda items. And there being no further business before the Board of Commissioners, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Have a nice evening, everyone.